A year every year. Here in Philadelphia and then expanded that work across the Commonwealth. They came to us, Janice Risch, Ryan Godfrey and Erin McCleary came and said, we would love to talk to the city commissioners. They're up for reelection and this would be a great opportunity to connect them to the community of poll workers that serve our city as our essential workers of democracy. So we were thrilled to be able to host this and thankfully all of our city commissioners willingly participated and step forward to have this conversation with you today. I'd love to introduce them now, starting with Commissioner and our Chairwoman Lisa Dealey. Commissioner Dealey was sworn in on January 4th, 2016 auspicious auspicious date. That was also my birthday. She led the department through the administration of the 2020 presidential election and successfully instituted universal mail-in voting for all of Philadelphia. She was unwavering in her responsibilities while under the critical scrutiny of the entire world during a devastating pandemic. Under her watch, Philadelphia transitioned to a new voting system with voter verifiable paper ballots and introduced e-poll books. She's got a number of other accomplishments under her belt and we're thrilled to have her with us today. Thank you, Commissioner Dealey. I'm also going to introduce Commissioner Bluestein. Commissioner Bluestein has served as City Commissioner since February of 2022. Prior to serving as Commissioner, Commissioner Bluestein was the Chief Deputy Commissioner for Al Schmidt, who left the office to serve as my former boss here at Committee of Seventy. Seth began working in the Office of the City Commissioners in 2012 as a Deputy Commissioner before being promoted to Chief Deputy Commissioner in 2017. From 2018 through 21, Seth also served as the department's Chief Integrity Officer. And I'm hoping Commissioner Sebier is also joining us. He is set to participate this evening. There we go. Commissioner Sebier was sworn in as a City Commissioner in 2020. His primary goal as Commissioner is to empower and enable all Philadelphians to participate in the voting process by addressing voter apathy and educating communities about the importance of civic engagement. We partner with each of the Commissioners often, but certainly Commissioner Sebier on his voter engagement work. We're thrilled to have everyone with us. And I would invite everybody to turn on their cameras and enjoy me here for the webinar. Everyone, if you would like to drop your questions in the chat, some people have sent them early. We have those queued up. Our veteran poll workers are going to kick us off today. But if you'd like to use the Q and A function or the chat, we will voice your questions to the Commissioners. So please get them ready, start typing, and I'm going to toss it over to Janice Risch to ask the first question.
Sure. I'll just let you know, I think we're being blocked by the host from turning on cameras. So anyway, first of all, I want to thank you Lauren for hosting this and organizing it for us. I want to thank all of the Commissioners for being here with us. Never really expected that and it's wonderful. For those who might not be familiar with us, I thought I would just tell you a little bit about the origins of the Poll Worker Caucus. We really got started after the 2020 primary when we all felt so really frightfully unprepared for the challenges of that day. And you know, we're willing to put our lives on the line, so to speak, to work during a pandemic. And those were really, as Lauren said, extraordinary times for everyone, especially we know for the Board of Elections who we could see had a monumental job staffing the polls during a pandemic while simultaneously training poll workers in what was a rapidly changing environment around voting procedures. We initiated the Poll Workers Caucus as a way of sharing information among ourselves and funneling feedback to the City Commissioners on where we felt there were holes in communication. And I think it's fair to say that we also felt a civic duty to help improve the experience of the flood of volunteers who were stepping up to staff what we knew were under-resourced polling divisions. At that time, we started developing some of the kind of training materials that we felt we needed. Committee of Seventy gave us tremendous support in terms of helping us create a Facebook group for communication and helping us develop materials. Getting a message, start my video, there you go. And there's been so much progress since then, as Lauren said, in the mail-in ballots and the technology that's been introduced at the polls and the communications back and forth. Yet, some of those original motivations for coming together as a Poll Workers Caucus, I think, still exists. We're as committed as you are in ensuring the integrity of our elections. And we know that depends on the effective recruitment and training and retention of poll workers. And I think there may be many things that we may discuss tonight. Some might be small issues related to working the polls, training and recruitment. But I wanted to maybe just take this opportunity before we open it up to questions to ask. Can this be the start of an ongoing dialogue of feedback with the City Commissioners? Where we have some structure for debriefing our experience working primaries and elections and you know, giving feedback on what's worked and what maybe could be improved?
Yeah, I mean, we are always, we always invite any feedback. I mean, as long as I've been a Commissioner, we've, I've received feedback after elections, whether it's phone calls or emails. I mean, we're always open to any and all feedback. I mean, where we, where we can make improvement, obviously, we want to be able to do that. And you know, we're not there every day. We're not in, in the polling location. So if you're going to bring something to our attention that we otherwise wouldn't know about it, of course, we, we welcome that as well. And I know that my colleagues feel the same way. I mean, we're not, I mean, a structured thing like this, we could not, it's unique that we're able to do that this in, for this election, because we are not sitting as the Board of Election. So the three of us can be here, but in the future, we, we could not do, we could, only one of us could do this in the future. So I would be agreeable to do it, you know, maybe, you know, do, do a couple of minutes and then share it with another Commissioner or maybe somebody does it in the primary and somebody does it in the general. We're happy to discuss that and work that out. The three of us, like I said, we couldn't be here all together in a, in a future election because of sunshine.
Great, thank you, appreciate that commitment.
I'll jump in here now, I think. My name is Ryan Godfrey. For those who don't know me, I've been an election worker in the Cedar Park neighborhood for, since 2014 and a judge of election since 2022. So I've kind of been through the whole transition from the old style machines to the, the cool new style machines and then again with the new electronic poll books. And pretty excited about that. I wanted to ask the Commissioners and thank you so much for, for being here as well. I want to echo that, I really appreciate your time here and I appreciate Lauren and the Committee of Seventy people for setting this up. My question is, at least my first question is about the recruitment of poll workers. I believe there are about 5,000 poll workers that are needed citywide. Many of us are elected and have put ourselves on the ballot to get that job. A lot of us have done the job for a while and some of us are, you know, getting up there in years and maybe aren't as able to do it anymore. I know there's sometimes difficulty in finding people who want to do the job and maybe it's harder in different parts of the city. Easier in some, harder in others. Can you talk about what programs you have in place now for attracting people who will find this work rewarding and interesting? And if you have thoughts about what else can be done in the future, maybe in the next term, along these lines? And that's a question for any of the Commissioners, thank you.
Hey, I guess I can jump into start and then pass it over to Chairwoman Dealey or Commissioner Sebier. So first off, thank you all for being here and you know, it goes without saying that Election Day only works because of the poll workers. You know, the Commissioners can't be everywhere. Without having dedicated poll workers every polling place, elections would not happen. And you're right, Ryan. I mean, our poll worker population is generally older than the average population and we have to do everything we can to help recruit younger individuals to be interested in serving at the polls. You know, our department, especially Chairwoman Dealey's office focuses a lot on recruiting high school students involved at 17. There are some requirements attached to that. They have to get their permission from their guardian and from the principal. But we do make a concerted effort to recruit students. And then everywhere we go, whether it's the outreach work that Commissioner Sebier does, or going to civic associations or other organizations that we all do, we're always asking people to get involved. Last year, we increased the pay for poll workers, which I think helped tremendously in our recruitment efforts. So it's a combination of communicating the importance of being a poll worker and also incentivizing to the best of our ability.
Yeah, speaking personally, my division had a vacancy last election that was filled with a high school senior from the program I think that you just talked about, and that turned out great. She didn't, I don't think knew what, didn't know what she was getting into for the day. Kind of had some strange ideas about what was going to be happening, but she picked everything up super quickly, was a terrific help. You know, I'd love to have her back. And I think from her perspective, she really enjoyed the experience. So is that a program that can be expanded to other high schools? I don't know if you concentrate on specific ones or if it, if that can go, you know, make it larger so that more students can have this experience.
It's a, it's a program that is available to any student in Philadelphia. We, we send out the information to every school in Philadelphia. And we work with the Governor's Office and PA Vote and you know, we, we publicize it pretty well. Unfortunately, it's like everything else, we, it seems like the same schools, you know, participate year after year. We do, you know, Commissioner Sebier, Commissioner Bluestein, you know, we all try to get into as many schools as we possibly can to let them know, you know, and to, and to get the students engaged. But unfortunately, you know, we are only get, we only get what, what we get based on the, the motivation of the teacher and/or the school. So you know, we were very successful a couple of years ago. So I had been a champion for years and trying to get the school district to put something in place to formalize voter registration for those students that are going to be 18 or before Election Day. And we were successful in getting the district to pass a resolution to create a voter champion in, in every senior class. And my original thought was that we could use that person as a vehicle to also help with the recruitment for the poll workers. But apparently they're, the school district is having its own struggles in finding students that are, you know, wanting to take on that responsibility or that role. So we are all doing the best we can and certainly if anybody here is involved with any school in the city, we're happy to come out and talk or you know, send out information. And it's all schools, it's public, parochial, private, you know, every high school in the city, we try to get into. I, I mail a letter to every high school. I know that Commissioner Sebier works steadfastly with PA Vote and the Urban, the Urban League to get, to get into these schools, the NAACP. Commissioner Bluestein has been working for years, even as a deputy, trying to get into schools. Basically, we send a letter out asking for an invitation into the schools and only the schools that accept are the only schools that we get in. I mean, that's just, that's the way it is, you know, we are, every once in a while, we'll get a surprise and we'll get a new school. But for the most part, at least it's been my experience that it's the same schools, you know, year after year.
Starting to see some questions coming in along the lines of, you know, the experience of poll workers. Would it be okay to start feeding some of them to, to the Commissioners? So one of them is, this is kind of typical of some of the experiences we have in the field. What answer do I give voters who are concerned because their signature on a screen is so different from one they have on record? You know, we're, we're so lucky to have voters who, you know, who are, who are highlighting this for us, like, oh my gosh, my signatures changed. So what do we say in those moments, both to help them, to reassure them of, you know, the integrity of our voting system?
Yeah, so voters can update their signature by filling out a new application and notating that they're making a change on their record. So they have the opportunity to update their signature if they feel like their signature is not matching currently what it is in the poll book. And ultimately, the judge of elections and the poll workers are the ones that are judging that signature. So if you work at the same polling place over and over and you know your voters, then that voter can feel a little bit more comfortable that they're not going to get rejected or have any issues on Election Day. I just want to add one other thing from our previous conversation about recruiting poll workers. For better or worse, in Pennsylvania, we elect three of the five positions. So it's not just a civic duty for a government and nonprofits to recruit people to make sure we fill the vacancies. But we could also go through the political process of finding candidates and running candidates and electing poll workers. So for anybody who is involved in the party system as a committee person or a, a poll worker who is an independent, who wants to recruit independents to run, you know, there is an opportunity to fill a lot of these vacancies when they're up for election.
Here's, here's another question. The requirement of returning the poll materials to the board during the late hours after polls close is absolutely chaotic and feels unsecured. People are grabbing boxes, the whole system feels crazy. Is there any other options to this system? Is this how other cities do it?
Yeah, so that requirement to get the election materials back to us, that is actually in the state election code. That's not like a Philly thing, it, that's, that's in the code. That's one of those things that doesn't make any sense really in 2023, but unfortunately, it's in the election, state election code. And I, and our staff really does a really good job down there, Delaware and Spring Garden. It seems chaotic, but it's our own unique chaos. Unfortunately, due to the state election code, that requires that material to come back to us. If there were a better way, believe me, I would, I would be all for it. You know, we, there are some things that we were trying to look at to see about, you know, maybe not having to have so many things or, you know, there's a whole, you know, we're always looking for ways to streamline the process, especially at the end of the night after people have been there since six, 6:30 in the morning and then they have to drive, you know, downtown. But unfortunately, you know, that's the process by law. And you know, even when I was a poll worker, you know, back in the eighties, it was the same process. We used to have to go to the police station, but with those big, heavy metal binders and all of the, and all of like so much materials. And we would all have to wait in line because you know, it would be one person at the police station picking up. You would have to like three wards, we're all dropping off at this one police station. So it, it does seem to me that it's a little better than it was in the past, but it's absolutely not perfect. And we know that and if there, and we're always trying to figure out a way to make it, to make it make more sense and to be more streamlined.
Here's another question that I'm going to follow this person's question with my own. The question from Bernadette is can the training for poll workers change separating training for judges, majority inspectors, minority inspectors and clerk? And I would have actually gone the opposite way and said, is there a way that everyone can be trained in everything? Knowing that we have some volunteers who might show up at polls and they might think that they're the low person on the totem pole and someone's going to tell them what to do, but in fact, they might find everything is going to fall on them to open the machines and get stuff set up. And so I would sort of go in, in another way, is there a way that everyone can be trained on everything? So you can take it either, either way that you want to take that question.
Yeah, so, so I agree with you, Janice. My view on it is to the best of our ability, we should train everybody who comes to the training on all the positions. Because you never know what role you'll need to end up filling when the time comes, especially if you don't have a full election board. So like Chairwoman Dealey, I got my start as a poll worker as well. When I was a freshman at Penn, I worked the 2008 presidential election for President Obama, which as you can imagine, was a very busy general election on the college campus. And we ran that entire division with just two of us. And it was a lot of work, running back and forth from the table to the machine and back. And we did go to training in advance, but we didn't know that there was only we two of us there. So if we had not trained to be the judge or the machine operator, we could have had a huge problem. So I do think we want to make sure that we're all as prepared as possible for any of the positions.
If I could follow up on that, Commissioner Bluestein. And talking about the recruiting, we've, you, you talked pretty thoroughly about reaching out to high schools and your, your comments about working the college campus made me wonder if there's also recruiting that could be done on, on college campuses as well?
Yeah, I think part of the problem is the students are not available in primaries. So they're only available for half the time. And you know, we do work with Temple and Penn and Drexel and other universities to see if there are students interested in serving, especially in the polling places that are within those wards. But yeah, they're only going to be available for the fall election, not for the primary.
Yeah, and the interest, the interest of a young person kind of correlates with the interest in the election. So if it's a, if it's an exciting election and you know, there's young people or it feels though it's, you know, it's special or it's sexy, you know, they're much more inclined to get engaged than say, you know, if it's a controller DA's race and there's no TV and nobody even, you know, it's, you know, the interest in the young people seems to follow the interest around the election.
Makes sense.
I'm seeing a couple of questions related to machine setup. One is, how can we give feedback on the written instructions on the voting machine? Another is, could we do a PowerPoint, how to open, operate? And I guess I'm going to add a comment to that, that I, this is one of those areas that I really feel is really, it's not as sexy as protecting, you know, the, the sort of policies around who gets to vote and how you ensure that the right person is voting. But to me, this is one of the issues that really affects the quality of the day for people is how stress-free it is for them to get the machine set up and to get it broken down at the end of the night so that they can get out. And so it is an area I'd like to see a lot of exploration of how could we make materials that someone could walk in totally unprepared, thinking they're going to be a clerk for the day and easily put their hands on the instructions for how to set up the machine, not have to look through boxes. Maybe the instructions are just taped to the machine so everyone can find it. But that, that's an area that I, I think a lot of improvement could, could be made.
Well, we also have the video that's on our, on our website all the time. So you know, worst case scenario, another, another thing they could do is just use their phone and watch the video. And I would say that I am just truly amazed happily about, over the, how well everybody is doing like citywide with the opening of the polls. Like I remember when I was first elected Commissioner, my phone would start ringing, no lie, at like 4:45, 5 o'clock in the morning. People were just like, like crazy, it was crazy. And now, I'm being honest, I mean, I can't speak for my colleagues, but the morning seems really, really like stress-free for us, right? And then at night, you know, it does get a little, you know, a little more hectic. And I think that is a combination of things, right? I think it's people that aren't trained properly or they don't have confidence in, in what they, what they know, right? But also I think fatigue has a lot to do with it, right? You've been there since 6 o'clock in the morning. You're, you're only supposed to push that button for like 10 seconds and then let it go. But somebody's talking to you, you're holding the button down, now you're aggravated, you're hitting the button again. You know, I get it, like it's, it's a fatigue and it's a frustration. And you know, we just worked with the Committee of Seventy and, and you know, Commissioner Blue Stein's office. And we worked on cleaning up that, this, the poll worker, the, the book. So I think we are getting better. The PowerPoint, there may be a PowerPoint on our website. I, I don't, I can't, I don't want to say for certain, but I do remember we did have a PowerPoint. Whether we still have it on the website, because it might have been replaced with the video, I don't want to say for certain. But you know, what, that's why we started color coding. Our executive director had the idea to color code the folder so that things were easy, more easily accessible. We are trying to make little, little improvements. I'm trying to work on a, like a placemat kind of, something to put the poll book on. That's, it looks like a placemat that has like pictures of what you do and where, what goes where. Because I, I saw that somewhere else and I'm using a different fashion. And I thought, well, that would be a really good idea if we could put like a step-by-step visual on that. And this way it sits on the table and the poll book sits on top of it and the poll worker knows it's there. So when they close the poll book, it'll be there and they can see exactly where everything goes. Because that's another, you know, the, the new equipment's great and, and we're so happy to have it out there on the street. But it's like this goes to this person, this goes to that person. It seems like, oh my gosh, why do we have to make it so crazy? But unfortunately, that's part of the system. But if we could make a visual guide, which is something I'm working on, I'm working on making sure we can get that done. I think that'll help too. So we're always looking to help, like in the beginning, I don't know if you worked in 19, you remember? If the tape touched the screen at the end of the night, it was like berserk, right? But we didn't know that. So we learned from you all, so thank you so much. So they fixed that, right? So now that's not a problem. So that's made the, the, the closing a little ea, you know, an easier, an easier thing. The less, the less names on the ballot, you know, the machine shut down faster. You know, it's just little things like that, you know, it takes longer for the machine to boot itself down and, and to tabulate whatever, count the, for that tape to come out for if there's, you know, if there's a lot of people that voted on it, you know, because it has to, more work, right? But we, I appreciate like every little, every little bit of advice at the end of the night helps. It, it's made a big difference in the morning. The opening of the polls has been, I would say, 80% better than it was in, in 2017 or 16. But the closing, you know, we still have a way to go. So whatever, you know, whatever feedback we can get from that, I'm happy to take it. I don't, I don't know, like, if it's the trade, you know, a lot, I really do attribute a lot of it to the, to the fatigue of the poll worker.
And just, yeah, absolutely. And, and the barrel keys are very frustrating at the end of the day and lead to a lot of tearing your hair out. Commissioner Dealey, you don't know how really encouraging it is to hear that the morning goes so smoothly. That's, that's really great to hear. Here, here's a question for you. This is how eager people are to really be familiar with the machines. Here's a request, could we get our hands on training on the machines and packing up at the close of voting? So these are people who want to go in and they want to get hands-on experience with the machines.
Yeah, when, when you go to an in-person training, just talk to the instructor and let them know what you're looking to practice on. And I'm sure they will be more than happy to help you out. And quite often, when we go to civic associations, we bring a sample voting machine with us so that the members of those civics can practice voting. And there's no reason why we couldn't do that for practicing, you know, closing a poll. So if you ever come out to your civic meeting and we're there and you want to help our staff close, uh, close the demo, I'm sure that'd be fine as well. And just to add a little bit to the prior question about educational materials and training materials. You know, I would just add that, don't forget, there's a very significant diversity amongst our poll workers. And not everyone learns the same way. You know, not everything that's helpful for one person is going to be as helpful for another. So we need to make sure we have a diverse. So we need to make sure we have a diverse method of teaching how the polls work or how the voting machines are set up. So for those of you who've been poll workers for a very long time, you'll remember all we had in the past was a giant newspaper. And you had to open up that newspaper and find the page that you're looking for and reading instructions in the paper. And then when Commissioner Schmidt and I came in, we turned it into a guidebook that had table of contents and an index. So at least you could look up on the first page what you were looking for and then find the information. And now we've have training videos and we have a new guidebook that we worked with the Committee Seventy on that we're working to get out there. So you know, having this information presented in different ways, you know, is really important that we don't just have one way of communicating.
Let's see, Holly has a question, I think a lot of us been wondering for years. What's the deal with the number two and the number four yellow books? Why are they called the number two and the number four? Let's see.
There's a number two and a number four because one goes in a number two envelope and one goes in a number four envelope. And yes, that's as silly as it sounds. And unfortunately, that's like another one of those things, just like dropping that material off at the end of the night. It's required by the state election code. So you know, that's that's the law. The minority inspector has to keep a list of a handwritten list of voters. And we get a handwritten list, so one goes in the two envelope and one goes in the four envelope.
And statewide, are they called the number two and the number four?
I would assume, I mean, I don't know, I I would, I could find that question now, but that's what we call them. So that's because one goes in the two envelope and one goes in the four envelope. But I I can find out what how other counties do it, but I don't, I don't know.
Let's see.
Do have to keep a list, a handwritten list for both the county board and the minority inspector. So no matter what they call it, they're doing, they're keeping two lists.
Let's see, is anyone else scanning these questions? For veteran poll workers, is there a resource guidance for workers who are coming up to the end of their term and wish to continue working? So this is someone who was elected as a write-in, didn't go through the nomination process. Also aware that if I'm on the ballot, I would not be able to work that election? Is that true? And so would leave us shorthanded.
Well, there's a that's a couple, that's a multi-layered question. So the first answer would be when the poll worker elections are come up, there is a petition period, just like any other candidate. So you would go online to become a poll worker and you would, you know, create a nominating petition for either judge of election or inspector of election. You would have to get the required number of signatures for judge, it's ten, for inspector, it's five. And you know, barring any challenge to your nomination petition or anything like that, that you had enough ballot signatures, your name would then be placed in nomination on the ballot. You can be a candidate on the ballot and work, you cannot you cannot do any campaigning for yourself or any politicking for yourself. You're, you know, you have to be, you know, the poll worker, you can't be a candidate, so.
But you can work, right?
Yes.
Yeah. There's a question here about payment. This is from Naomi, in terms of remuneration, having served as a judge of the election for the past three years is clear that it's a much larger job and responsibility than the other poll workers have. And she's curious why the pay is only five dollars more.
So technically, that five dollars is for returning the materials on Election Day? The pay for poll workers is defined by the election code as in they provide a range that poll workers are allowed to be paid and then counties can choose what to pay those poll workers within that range. So when we increased the pay for poll workers last fall, we were getting it to the upper levels of the range, where prior to that, it was in the middle part of the range. So that range isn't different for different positions, it's just overall for the, you know, working on the election board. So that's why we pay everyone basically the same rate of the five positions. And then the judge gets five extra dollars to make sure that the materials are returned.
As a follow-up question, Naomi says she's was underpaid for the work in the primary. And is there someone that she should be talking to to make sure she gets the full amount of that check?
The the checks for the balance that was due to some of the poll workers that didn't get a training pay, those checks are in the mail and should be received. If they have, if you haven't gotten it already, you should get it, you know, within the next couple of days. As long as we, you had let us know beforehand that your check was short. You can call our one of our offices, you can call my office at two one five six eight six three four six zero, we're happy to have somebody check on it. But the balance due to the poll workers that were missing training in their payroll checks, those checks have been mailed.
As a follow-up about payroll, I know, you know, it's kind of a traditional complaint that it takes too long to get paid after the election. We hear about this kind of all the time. Is there a way for that process to be sped up? I know if we we have at least the theoretical possibility of putting payroll information into the electronic poll books, is that something that we can use in the future to eliminate the the paperwork and maybe some data entry that's going to have to happen?
I will tell you that that has been my single most biggest change that I have immovable object, that's what I call it. Every it's an immovable object, it is so frustrating for me because it has been a, you know, a constant complaint, you know, since I became a commissioner. And really, it was a complaint when I was a judge of elections because I can remember not getting my check, I think it was sixty dollars until the Fourth of July, you know, when you worked the primary. So I, you know, why does it take so long? It's twenty twenty-three, why can't we speed it up? I get it. Unfortunately, it's part partially because of how we gather the information and then partially because of how the city does its payroll, right? We do elections, we don't, we don't do payroll. So we ask everybody to fill out those paper payroll forms and they they are like copied, you know, you know, there's three copies, you get a copy, we get a copy. You know, some people write their sevens and they look like sevens. Some people write their sevens and they look like nines. Sometimes a five could be an eight or, you know, a zero could be an eight, you know, all these things happen, right? So that transposing, transcribing the information that the voter, that the poll workers put on those poll sheets and then putting them into a spreadsheet to then be compared to the the trade, the seminar cards to then be, you know, sent to a file compiled and then sent to finance and finance has to approve it and then send it back to us. And then we send it back to finance and then finance sends it to the controller and then the controller approves it. And then the controller sends it to the Treasury Department and the Treasury approves it. And then finally, it gets sent to for checks to be printed. But first it has to go to OIT because OIT has to create the file of the check. So it's a, there, the time that that all takes, especially in the last couple of years has been really frustrating. But we, we are aware of it, believe me, painfully aware of how ridiculous it is. But let me just say, one of the reasons why, and maybe everybody can understand this, is the way we the way we get the information, right? Because everybody's handwriting it. And even though you might think, well, I don't understand, you already have my name and address and my social security number and my date of birth because I've been working the polls since nineteen ninety-three. I know that. But the city doesn't retain your information. So every time, every election, we have to create a new record for you. And that is the city's process and that really prolongs the payroll process as well because that takes, that takes weeks for us to do because not everybody gets their payroll sheet back to us either. So we have to go hunt down some payroll sheets all over the city to make sure we got everybody. And then we, you know, we start the process of doing the data entry. And then it gets checked and checked again and checked again for errors that we might have made or, you know, have somebody else look at it and does this look, you know, you, does this look right to you? The like, one of them, the biggest for me, one of the biggest selling points of the electronic poll book was to eliminate that process and to get poll workers paid quicker. I can't, I can't eliminate the city's process, the finance, the controller, the OIT, the treasurer, I I can't do that. But what I can do is I can make our process on our end quicker. And I believe that the best way to do that is by having the poll workers type in their information on the electronic poll book so that we get the information, it's in a usable format. Of course, there will always be mistakes, but it's not, you know, we're not going to have to be rechecking and checking and rechecking. And we're not have to go and going to have to hunt down payroll sheets. And you know, it's only, this will only be the second election with the electronic poll books. And we really, to be fair, we didn't want to bombard the poll workers with everything and and change everything. There there should be there, there should be some application. That's hopefully this election, I'm not on the Board of Elections, so I I can't say for certain. But there should be some application, hopefully this election, which will start that process. It won't be perfect and it's not finished, it won't be finished yet. But the light, there is a light at the end of the tunnel with the implementation of the electronic poll book. And I know I talked for a really long time and I'm really sorry, but that's one of my, the most frustrating things for me.
Well, Commissioner Deal, I actually appreciate that you shared all that with us because I think getting a sense of the many, many steps you're going through for just one tiny part of the election process is, you know, really enlightening to us. And of course, part of what we want to say to you is what are ways we can help you with parts of the work that you're doing and make it easier? One of the questions someone's asking here is if someone wants to volunteer to work in my ward, is there a way for them to designate it when they fill out their form as wanting to be a poll worker? Or should I contact someone in the Elections Office to flag their name? Is there a way we can help you speed up the process of identifying which divisions are staffed and which aren't?
Yeah, so our Election Board Unit tracks all of the people they've communicated with, whether by phone or email and who's gone to training. So they have a decent idea going in each week where the major vacancies are versus the boards that are totally filled. But if somebody has a specific division they would like to volunteer for or an area they'd like to help out in, whether it's contacting one of our offices or their point of contact with the Election Board Unit, they can just let us all know. And then we can communicate internally to make sure that that information is logged into the database.
Are there other things that we can help you with?
I mean, again, you know, I don't know, when I was a judge of elections and, you know, a hundred years ago, I used to make everybody do the payroll sheet first because that's, you let make less mistakes, right? In early morning. So I would say that that's, I don't know if did they tell you that in training, but I would say to do the payroll sheet first because it it'll be clearer and more, you know, easier to read, hopefully. And like I said, there should be applications coming soon, if if not this election, to start putting that into the electronic poll book, but in the interim, if with the paper payroll sheets, if we could just be conscious and in writing clear, that would be helpful. I would also say, just to get off topic for one minute, I have to jump off a little before seven thirty, but I have noticed there are some great questions in the chat. So if there's a way for Seventy to get us these questions, we can make sure that we get answers to all of them for you. Like I'm I'm reading them and some of them are really good. You know. Just so.
That we can truly disseminate them, certainly to the registrants who've signed up with their email, but also in the Poll Worker Caucus on Facebook. And it's a plug if you're not already a member of the Poll Worker Caucus, definitely consider.
If you don't mind, I would like to take us just one question from this list because we get calls about it all the time. It says, is there recourse for getting rid of a board member who isn't capable of doing the work? That is a very frequent call that we get. Unfortunately, if the person is elected, they're, you know, the only way to get rid of them is to impeach them because they're an elected official. But other than that, if there's, you know, if they don't live in the ward or if there's somebody there that lives in the division that would rather do it, there are always, you know, avenues that you can, you can go. But we want to make sure that people understand, as Commissioner Blue Stein stated earlier on, even though we do all we can to help recruit to make sure that these boards are full, at the end of the day, they are constitutionally elected positions.
Here's a question about the modems. At, let's say, at our polling place for the last election, our modem went out half hour before the polls closed. The helpline wasn't able to fix the problem. Has this occurred at multiple polling places? What do we do when no help is available?
I mean, did that have any effect on your ability to close the polls?
I guess the question is if you heard about any widespread issues around those effects.
We have not, no, this is actually the actually the first issue that I'm hearing about that. So if whoever, wherever that is in the city, if you could shoot me an email about that, I'd be happy to hunt that out. Or give me a call.
And here's a question like that's occurring to me listening to. Is there a division of responsibility among the commissioners that we should be aware of for directing different questions to people?
We we all work together on these issues. Obviously, as Chairwoman Commissioner Dealey takes the lead on a lot of our work, especially as it relates to public meetings and communications with other city departments and city council. But when it comes to solving problems for the voters, we are a unified team and we're all here to serve.
Let's see. I'm still, I'm kind of reviewing the questions.
There's a question about as a senior citizen layperson, which I assume means not a poll worker currently. Where do I begin to become a poll worker? I think that we've that the the website has a lot of information about that, right? About becoming a poll worker and then the Committee of Seventy also has a lot of information about becoming a poll worker.
I I would bet that Lauren, in which she closes this call, is going to tell everybody how they can become a poll worker, right?
Absolutely. And here's a, here's a question from Pamela McBride. Is it possible to make the guide for election workers available online in a searchable format? PDF is nice, but there's no search function if using one's phone. It wouldn't even have occurred to me to use my phone to search for the instructions. So there you go, like you said, Seth, people are accessing the training materials in dozens of different ways.
Yeah, I mean, we're certainly open to exploring other options on how to present the information. So if the guidebook is not being accessed from a computer where you can do Ctrl F, then we can certainly look at what other technology there is to make it searchable.
There's a question from Kate about missing materials from the box. And she couldn't get a hold of anyone on the helpline who knew how to help in this particular manner. Is it's there a plan to improve the helpline? Is three out of eleven an option here for the for poll workers?
Three eleven is not an option for election board workers. However, we have done a lot of upgrading to our call center and we also have rovers that are uh rovers that are traveling around all over the city, um, visiting polling places to make sure that everybody's got everything they need. And every ward um should have a polling place inspector that comes around and they're the person that asks you like, are the lights on and heat on? Does is the machine working? Uh, any of those people, any of those technicians that stop in or stop by, um, and you're missing something, you know, you can ask them. Uh, if it's something that, you know, another division might have some and like if it's bad, like say you went into your, the back of your machine and you didn't have uh any more ballots, maybe they forgot to put them in there and you are, you're in a polling location where there's multiple uh divisions voting there, you could just ask somebody, can I, can I uh, you know, have some ballots until somebody gets here? I don't really know what um, what was missing, you know, so I don't, I don't know, you know, if it was catastrophic to uh, you know, the day going on. Um, but, you know, we're doing a a really good job uh in that call center. We've streamlined it and we have a a whole new uh program that's handling that. So hopefully, uh, those problems of getting through and getting help uh will not persist.
Um, here's a comment from Cynthia. She received her mail-in ballot today. So yay, that's working. Uh, uh, here's a technology question. Uh, suggestion styluses for the electronic poll books?
They're on their way.
They're coming.
All right, so improvements all the time. Um, and any last guidelines for Election Day volunteers?
I do not. I would like to just say, you know, keep the communication going. Um, we're happy to, you know, continue to take this feedback and I I got a couple of great uh ideas tonight, especially the uh searchable online guidebook. We'll see what we can do about that. And the uh the questions or the uh the busy signal or or whatever you're getting with the helpline, that's, that's uh problematic. I want to make sure that that's going to get resolved. And other than that, I would just again like to thank you for the opportunity. I unfortunately have to step off to go to another meeting, but I will leave you in Commissioner Blue Stein's capable hands.
Well, thank you very much. And I think we're not going much longer ourselves. Is that right, Lauren?
About six minutes.
There you go. Uh, well, maybe I'll add a a concern of my own. Um, uh, and Commissioner Bluestein, you can take it back. Um, but I think with the addition of the poll, the electronic poll books and they worked very, very smoothly for us. I think some preparation on having enough extension cords to fit the outlets would be a big help. Um, because we're able to get into our polling place the night before, we, you know, can uh get everything set up and we knew we needed to bring our own extension cords. But again, for the first time, poll worker who's showing up, um, that could be a problem if they can't connect their electronic poll books to an outlet.
Yeah, so as we prepared for launching the electronic poll books, our polling place investigation unit went and did surveys of a lot of the polling places. I don't think they hit all hun- seven hundred and fifteen, but they got through hundreds of them. And we had, we do send out extension cords to a number of divisions. So if you're in a division that needs an extension cord and did not receive one, then let us know and we can make sure it gets packed and sent.
Okay, great.
There's one more question here, which is related to something that I've been wondering as well. This is from Tina. I'm a judge of elections and our board is full. Uh, uh, poll workers and are still being sent to work in our division while other divisions are lacking people to work. So what's the best way to let the commissioners know that we do not need extra workers? Uh, and I guess more, as a more general question, uh, is there, um, what's the best way for a judge of elections to find out who the ci- the the city or or uh the commissioner's office understands to be on that board? Um, is that, for me, it's like, it's generally a phone call to the office, but I don't know if that's what I should be doing or uh, should they be contacting me? Um, how should that work?
Yeah, so if a judge of elections wants to know who we expect to show up in your division, then you can certainly reach out to any of the commissioner's offices or directly to your point of contact in the election board unit. Um, like I said, they are tracking that information every day as they make phone calls and emails, confirming that people are going to work and attend training. So that information exists. Um, and if they are for some reason mistakenly overfilling a board, we certainly would want to know that as well so that we can redistribute some of the volunteers to other places that might need help.
But there's no formal communication for uh, you know, letting a judge know who, who the the commissioner's office expects to be there.
Not unless you have a pre-established like communication already set up with your point of contact. So every ward, like we have five or six employees in that unit and they all have assigned wards that they work on on a regular basis. So you're probably interacting with the same employee over and over each election. So that would be your best point of contact to start. And then if for some reason you're not getting an answer, then reaching out to any of the commissioner's offices can help.
Okay. Um, I, I think we're ready to wrap it up. I Commissioner Bluestein, I really, really appreciate your attendance. Really appreciate everything that you and the other commissioners have done for us in the city to protect uh and defend our elections. And um, let's hope that twenty twenty-four is a good year for us. Lauren, did you have any closing remarks you wanted to make?
I just wanted to thank everybody. One, thank, thank you to the commissioners for joining us and for lending their expertise. And of course, thank you to all of the poll workers, including our fantastic ones who helped organize this event. Um, I did drop the links to register to be a poll worker. If you've not done so yet, we convinced you to step up. Uh, you can click either of those links in the chat right now um, to do so. And I have recorded all the questions that were left unanswered. I will send them to the commissioners and then uh send all the answers to the people who registered and then post them also, along with the recording of this video in the Poll Worker Caucus on Facebook. So thank you all for giving us your time this evening. Uh, we appreciate it very much and and thank you again. Have a great night.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks for your service.